At six o'clock in Lee, New Hampshire. Welcome to the Select Board meeting. I'm Carrie Brown. I'm joined by picture and castor. Select person, picture and castor. I have to get that.
You do that.
And of course, thanks to Westman's Scott Ludby. Glad to have you. I'll call the meeting to order. We'll move into public comment. If you have a comment that you would like to make, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you. Come up to the podium. Face the board. You have three minutes to put your comment out. Do I have any takers? Wow, we're all right along. All right. Jerely Zazula. Did I say that right?
You did. Very good. Both of them. Really throws people off.
I think it makes you... There we go.
My name's Jerely Zazula and I represent a local organization known as Elder Pet. We're 501(c)(3). The organization started in the 80s as part of UNH. It was a student project. In the 90s, we became affiliated with a national organization known as Pet Partners. And what... We do different things, but what I'm here for today is to talk about our therapy animal program. And what we do is we put on classes for handlers for therapy animals. And we do evaluation for therapy animal teams. And this is... We are a owner and a... Usually a dog, although we do allow other animals. Go through a testing procedure. It's like a... The first part's like a mini obedience class. And the second part, we kind of push the envelope a little bit, like they're actually visiting in the facility. So we have with us usually a wheelchair walker, cane, and have them go through their paces. And we also have volunteers that act as role players. They'll act as residents or patients or crowds, things like that, so that we can see how the animal acts in reality. So we have been lucky up to this point in using UNH facilities for over 30 years. And there's been a change in administration. We're no longer able to use those buildings. So we're looking around for other sites in this area, because that's where we've always held them, to have these evaluations. The class is just me and the handlers, so there's no animals involved. Now, as far as the evaluations, we usually have one team here all day, which is the distraction team, to see how the animals act with other animals. And then we have teams going in and out all day. Sometimes there will be three teams here at once, one waiting. Sometimes people have two animals they're registering. So there's usually never more than four animals here at any one time. And depending on the enrollment, it can go half... A couple hours in the morning, or it can go all day from 8:30 to 4:00. So we're gearing up after COVID. We haven't been doing anything for a while and basically starting over. So we're looking to ask your permission to use this facility as our training center, at least part-time. We are looking at other facilities. And if you can accommodate us on certain dates, we hopefully have places that we can go. So questions?
Roughly how many times a year would you do a class?
We try to do it at least once a quarter. If we start getting a backlog, we have nearly 70 teams in our organization right now. And we have to reevaluate every two years. And then we have new teams coming in. So sometimes we get a backlog. So we have to have an extra evaluation here and there. So it would probably be four times a year, most times, possibly six if we get a backlog. I don't know what COVID's going to do to the teams, whether there's going to be more or less.
Questions?
This is an incredibly important thing to do. I used to teach dog training and I know where it is. It's an incredibly vital resource, so I really want to support it. My concern is the location, because that is, you know, where our fire and our police... It's an emergency facility. So I'm just a little concerned about how, with people coming in and out, dogs and all those things going on, how that would work. And I'm wondering if we might have a better location. I'm not... I'm trying to think of what else might be a possibility. I don't know. Chief, do you want to speak to that?
My concern would be that, because we have people who want to come and report crimes, paperwork, whatever it may be. You know, these people could be subjected to a possible disturbance in our lot... In the front lobby. That's my main concern. You never know when somebody's going to come in, what the situation's going to be. They may come in, they may not come in if they see the animals, because they're afraid of dogs. And we don't want to deter people from coming in to report the crime. So those would be my concerns.
Could I just speak to that? After speaking with... And I have to double-check the facility. I've been here for a couple of months. And speaking with other organizations that have just a room, what we could do is have people come in without their animals to register. And then they would wait until I called them in with their animal. If they're in the car, if the weather's bad. Or they can walk around outside if that didn't bother the police department. As far as the noises bothering the animals, that's part of reality. You know, that's one of the things that we tried to test them for. So...
And how big a space do you need? How big a room do you actually...
We probably have the size of this that we could use. If it's bigger, we could use that, too.
And what about our other, like, spaces in the town for any other facilities we're thinking of that might be? And maybe that's something we need to take a little time to think about?
We're also looking at churches. We're looking at community centers. We have got one location that we can use one time, which actually happens to be the new Dover Police Department.
Oh, okay.
Because one of our evaluators works for them, so... But only a one-shot, you know, to get us started. But, you know, we're looking for... We'd like to have a home base, but we can't switch around if we can get enough.
Absolutely. It's such an important program and it brings a lot of great things to the community. So I do think we need to find a way to help if we can, but I don't know if it would take some time to...
Chief, did we try it one time just to see how it works out, or...
Sure. I don't know if Scott, if Chief never has any concerns or not. You may want to check with him as well.
I had some questions. When do you usually have these? During the weekday and the weekend?
Weekends. They're always on weekends.
Always on the weekends?
Yeah.
I'm wondering in terms of the interaction with somebody coming to report something, if we had them use the side entrance and not the front entrance, that would segregate people.
And they stay away from the front hallway?
Yeah. Well, they would have to come in at some point. Set things up. But if they had the people that are coming for this particular service come in the side, that might keep them away from people, because they come in the front all the time, right?
Right.
And I'd be amenable for us to try it on a trial basis, just to see how it works. And if it works, continue. If it doesn't, we'd say, "Sorry."
I just have a quick question about... I know a lot of times with these pets, one of the things you do is you may have to have a special back and things like that, because they don't have the dander as much. Is that something that happens?
Yes. They're supposed to... This is role-playing. So they're supposed to be... The teams that are coming in to evaluate are viewed as if they're going on a visit.
Okay.
So they have to have...
Dave.
Nails clipped. Otherwise, they don't pass. They have to get past the first test.
Producing some of those.
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to do a trial... Do a trial on a trial basis for the elder pet organization to utilize public safety complex. And let's... We'll need the dates in advance for us to approve.
Yeah. I would need to... Normally, what we have been doing is... I don't know who your scheduling person is or if I have to come for each meeting, but I check with you with the dates we would like. And we try to schedule while we can. And we put in every date we can use. And then I say, "We need one this month, one this month." And then you tell us which ones are available and we go from there. So, you know, I can't give you dates right now. As I said, we're regrouping. We've got to get a whole set of volunteers, crowd volunteers, something like that.
We understand. So we'll give it a trial and let's see how it works out and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Can we include the stipulation that they use the side entrance?
Side entrance?
Yeah. And how long of a trial period do we give them?
We're going to do one trial per session.
Do one?
We'll do one evaluation and revisit.
Yeah. See how it goes, see how it goes for everybody. Continue if there's any other options of places that may...
Right. Yeah. At some point, I'll want to look at the room again. I haven't been there in a while, but I think it can work okay.
So should I check with you about the...
Yeah.
On the way out?
Oh, that would be great.
That's good.
All right. Thank you.
Do we need to finalize? There was a motion.
Oh.
Do we need to...
Second. Did we get a second? I'm sorry. Did we get a second? Roll vote? Select my buddy?
Do you need roll?
Don't need a roll vote?
Yeah. We're all here.
Let's do it anyway. Select person, caster? Select my Brown. Let's see. Yes. Let's move on.
I voted yes, too.
So here we are. Mr. Rubine and Paul Kozowski, Sustainability Committee members, Regional Compost Working Group members.
Excuse me. We have something for public comments that we weren't able to... It's very quick and I apologize that I walked in a little bit later. My son gave me a quick phone call and told me he needed to be picked up by soccer quickly, so...
Well, are we saying both of you have a...
Just me. Oh, just me. Just me.
Go ahead. All right. If you would, come to the podium. Give us your name, address.
Yes. Thank you so much for being flexible. My name is Holly Pardle. It's nice to meet you. I live at 34 James Farm. And I was in receipt of a response from the town in regards to some work that's going to be done on my property today. And I was hoping to meet with you. I would love to have some time to meet with each of you and the town attorney, if you wish, and just share some specific information that I think sometimes may just... May not have come across, or maybe you have not had the opportunity to hear some specific things that I think may have been a factor in the decision that was made today. And I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page. So I'm requesting a meeting with you guys, if that's possible. I think a lot of communication has gone back and forth through the attorney, and I think that can be very challenging. It can be very expensive. And I think that some of the information has been lost. My story, I think, has been lost. My experience has been lost. And I'm just the type of person that loves to have a face-to-face and talk with people. And so I was hoping that you guys would be willing to meet with me.
What decision was made today?
That's what I was worried about. And I think that happens often. That I think that there was a settlement proposal that we've gone back and forth trying to work this problem out. And so I received a letter from the attorney today that shocked me a little bit, that wasn't aligned with what I thought was going to happen.
I'm sorry. A letter from your attorney or...
No, from your attorney. From your attorney. And sometimes I think... That's why I forward a lot of information, because I think there are times when you don't get the information. And my honest thought is that maybe you didn't hear more information before this letter came out. So I'm hoping that we can all sit together and kind of ask each other questions and just talk about facts and just come to a resolution. I would really, really love to have this resolved before I start another school year. I mean, it's going on three years that this has been an issue, so...
Have we received whatever this is?
It's a... We received a copy of a letter that our attorney sent to Ms. Pearl and Ms. Kavanaugh. There isn't anything in the letter that the board hadn't already decided on. And so the attorney is acting per the board's instructions.
So I'm just assuming you've read that letter. You haven't read the letter. And that's what happens sometimes, is when I get my letters, I reach out, because I don't think that you guys have received them. Things from my attorney, I know that you haven't received. So I just think there's so many gaps. And all I'm asking is that we have an opportunity to fill those gaps and just all be on the same page and come to some type of an agreement.
Well, we have your request.
Thank you.
We will not respond to it right now.
Oh, no, no. That's okay. That's okay. But that's fine.
Good evening. Paul Kozowski and Dean Rubine is with me tonight from the Sustainability Committee and from the Regional Compost Working Group. And we have... Periodically, we spend some time with you to advise you and keep you up to date with what our committee is doing. Tonight, we have two purposes. One is to get... Advise you and to receive opinion from you on the Regional Compost Working Group's Community Sustainability Survey, which they've been working on for a while. Dean's going to speak to that. And then afterwards, I will speak to several projects that we're currently working on. The Regional Compost Working Group is a collaboration between the University Sustainability Institute, between the Town of Durham and its Waste Management Advisory Committee, and between the Oyster River School District Sustainability Committee and us, the lead Sustainability Advisory Committee. We designated and appointed, with your approval, two members of our committee to be part of the working group, Dean Rubine and Chuck Cox. So they've been working really hard to come up with a survey, which can be administered to the school district, the Town of Durham, and to the Town of Lee with your permission. Since we feel that your permission is awfully important and your awareness is important, we're here tonight to present the survey to you for reaction and opinion. It was in your backup. I'm not going to project anything. It's lengthy. It's very thorough. It's very complete. So I'll turn it over to Dean right now.
Paul is going to handle this, but I'm happy to. We're interested in this committee of the four groups in getting some composting up and running. So that was really our purpose, is asking those composting questions. But once you say you're going to survey, everybody wants to get their questions in. And we basically limited it to energy and, you know, trash, compost, disposal. There not included with the packet was the list of businesses in Lee they were proposing to survey. I'm sorry you guys didn't get them, but there's only a dozen of them in there. The local restaurants, LCG, Coffee Crazy, Pizza Spinners, Sunny's, Wendy's, McDonald's, Dunkin' Donuts, Subway's and Mo's, and then Market Basket. And then the two gas stations also deal with food. So basically, places that are throwing away food or maybe throwing away food, and we hope to collect that food and get an idea of how much is out there. In addition, so the survey is officially part of a UNH survey. So it's going through their review committee, which I think evaluates it to make sure the questions are not psychologically damaging. So we're at least be assured of that. And in addition to you guys giving your blessing for this survey, the committee has asked me to ask you guys if you have any sort of existing way to contact these businesses, email addresses or something. And also to tell you that the plan, or the current plan, is that somehow we'll reach out and contact these businesses in advance. And then we will go pay a visit to them, tell them about the survey, ask them if they want to do the survey then. And if they do, we'll go through it with them. Otherwise, we'll give them the email... I mean, the URL to do it. And the plan is in Durham. Somebody from Durham would go with the UNH intern and then Lee. I would probably be me going with her, so we'd have somebody from Lee there. And that's pretty much it. So here's the survey. I thought it was a little long and difficult, but...
As you are aware, we've been working on reducing the waste stream in Lee for quite some time, a number of years. And I'm working with Steve Bolick to do that through educational outreach. That's the front end of it. This is the back end of it. It is an enormous problem, as you're well aware. It's costing us a lot of money, and a lot of it is food. So food that's thrown away. So the composting component that Dean has worked on for quite a while here and our group has worked on involves trying to get something cited in Lee. But this survey addresses something larger. And there are other partners with other ideas. So the survey is trying to get at how large the problem is, what the business sector is doing to address the problem, and how we might work with them collaboratively to figure out a proper solution. Relative to citing in Lee, it's quite challenging and for a variety of reasons. For even for Lee to cite municipal composting. And Lee, we're trying to work through that perhaps. All along, we've kept Julie advised and Steve has been advised. And Katrin is the board representative in our committee, so she's been following this. It's been an interesting process and the survey is complex, no doubt about it. And so we're hopeful that we can get some opinion from you tonight and maybe some direction. And I think the route that it would follow is your comments would go back to the working group. And they're hopeful to get this survey out and about in the communities at some point in time.
Soon.
Very soon. So, you know, personally, we would like your support for that. But if that's not there, then I guess the working group will need to figure out what another way to get at it. So I won't take questions and comments at this point.
I'd like... Can you just... I'm just trying to understand a typical question.
Here's... We sent you the survey and I'm happy to read you a few questions from it. It's fairly long. It starts with this big preamble about UNH and informed consent. And then it's, "Where's your business located?" And it's multiple choice, Durham or Lee. "Tell us about your business." And you have a few choices, grocery store, restaurant, retail establishment, service provider, or other. The next one is basically, there's a preamble and then some questions about sustainability.
I got... Do you want to work with you right there? Do you want to cruise through this?
Sure. So to what degree is waste reduction? And there's a big list of examples of consideration in your business.
So you're trying to feel for their waste stream and what they do?
Yes. We're trying to determine how they're disposing of their organic waste.
Okay.
And also their recycling. Questions got put in there for some reason. And there's all the questions about their energy usage. And, you know, like I said, our interest is mostly on the garbage side.
And then they answered that? They responded to that? What happened? I mean, what's the end result? I'm just trying to...
Well, the end result is the committee comes up with a plan for doing composting.
Okay.
And we'll have some idea of how much we might expect. That's really the purpose of this survey. These are allegedly the big producers of organic waste and we're going to try to get some actual data on how much we might reasonably expect. So that's the purpose for my thing. And Durham, you know, was worried about styrofoam and things like that that I don't think we have any interest in. But so there's some questions on that and energy usage.
So Durham is going to, with the assistance of the town and perhaps the Rotary a little bit, to survey restaurants in that community. The university has a pretty good handle on what they're doing already. And their method for dealing with waste is to burn it, actually, to gasify it and harvest that way. And that's different than composting, but they have... As you're probably aware, the Turnkey landfill was in agreement, an arrangement with Durham to mine the methane from Turnkey. And then turn, it is piped onto the UNH and campus and creates energy on campus. So there's different methodology out there. And, you know, Lee, you know, we're somewhere in between. So, you know, on one side of it, we have farmers who use compost and they're part of the arrangement. And we certainly have a program at our transfer station that is growing, you know, under Steve's leadership and becoming more successful. So there are two ends to it. So this end would give us some hard data in terms of what's happening in the business community. The other end of it is the front end. What do individual households do? They're not part of the survey, but they are part of the goal.
Do you think it's important to note that when you do trash, it's... You know, we pay by the ton. And food is incredibly moisture-rich and heavy. So we're paying a large amount of money to throw that away when that actually could become something sustainable, useful, something that's actually positive. So not only do you not have to pay for it, but you actually create something else. So I think that's why it's such an important thing and so many towns are talking about it.
The usual estimate is 20% to 22% of municipal solid waste is food waste.
Right.
Dean, given the list of places that you're going to poll, where's their waste stream going now? Is it going to the transfer station or are they taking care of it themselves?
We don't know. That's one of the questions.
That's... Okay. Because that would be a concern for me if you're trying to divert some of their waste stream to Town of Lee, so we have to take care of it. I don't particularly care for that.
That's... We're going to find all that out. That's why we're asking, you know, how you deal with it now and how much of it is there.
Excellent.
And within that set of questions, there is a component that talks about whether it's taken to the transfer station, which we may or may not be aware of.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
No. I'll do the survey. I'm done.
Thank you. Yes, morning.
Good morning.
I do. Some of it involves, Dean. We have three projects that we're currently working on as a Sustainability Committee. One of them is water. And we've worked on water before. And with the drought situation, we're reapproaching that through a series of articles in E! Cryer that we'll dovetail with Denise's every week now in the E! Cryer. She has a link to the Northeast Drought Monitor. And we're currently in moderate. We just edged our way into moderate drought and we don't anticipate that that's going to change much. So we're going to take turns on our committee writing articles and try to do it on a weekly manner about things that we personally do or things that individuals can do to sharpen water awareness. The second thing that we are working on is bigger and a bit more complicated. And working with Julie, we would like to do an index directory of the artisans and cottage industry operators and craftspeople in Lee. And we would like to do that as an online directory on a voluntary basis and publish it as a document that would be accessible on... it as a document that would be accessible on Tom's website and our Facebook page, but it would be a one-way direction. A respective person interested in the directory would go to the directory and receive information, but they wouldn't be able to contribute to the directory. We would manage the directory with the town. This is something we've been working on for a few years, and it started as a skill-share network, and Matt Raub, who was a member of our committee at the time, was interested in starting. We hit a legal hurdle with that, that we couldn't get beyond the legal responsibility of the town, i.e. Primex and the town, for people who made connections sharing skills. So we've been trying to figure out how to get at this. You are certainly aware that the Agricultural Commission has a brochure, a farm and food brochure for the town. This is similar to that, but the key difference is this would connect our many, many talented partisan artisans with each other, and give them a chance to, and give people who aren't part in that group a chance to access that group. So that's what we're working on. Presently, Julie and I are trying to go through the draft stage and get it ready enough so that Primex can take a look at it. And I think that's, is it fair to say, Julie, that's kind of like where we are? So we're hopeful that we can thread that needle with the insurer and get this done. And the final thing we're working on is the second edition of Lee's Trees. And we did Lee's Trees a couple of years back, and it was pretty successful, maybe three dozen people participated, they had a really good time, and the elementary schools, both Masquay and McCarran, participated. This year, we put a wrinkle in it, and actually, it was a combination of ideas from Chuck Cox and Dean, so I'll let Dean speak to that.
We're calling it Lee's Trees, Old and New, and the idea is you start with an old picture like this, and then you, you may have it, or we, the town will supply some, and then you have a current picture of the tree, and hopefully submit two pictures, and hopefully an interesting story along with it. We're gonna, we're gonna, we had two, well, we had three categories of entries. One is the two pictures, the same thing as two pictures, but one doesn't have a tree because a tree is either no longer there, or maybe there's a place that didn't have a tree and now has one. And then the third category, like last time, is just tree art, if you want to make a tree song or a tree painting, doesn't have to be that old, and we'll take anything submitted. And we're gonna kick it off at the Leaf Fair like we did two years ago, and I think we finished up at the end of the year last time, like, do the same schedule?
Yeah, we did, and we had awards and categories, but no criteria for judging, it just was, you know, whatever felt good was correct. At this point, Tom are collaborating with the library and the Historic Society, and we are reaching out to the Conservation Commission and to the elementary schools again. And we don't want to go beyond the elementary schools because it's a bit unwieldy, and we want the focus to be on Lee's Trees. So if you have any questions or comments about any of those projects, be glad to take them at this time.
No, I like the idea of the artisans, because I'm quite familiar with the brochure that the Act Committee puts out with the map from farms, and I think it's very nice. I think the artisan effort would be the same.
Yeah, we're pretty excited about all that, and it's a resource waiting to be connected.
And the connection between the two projects is the prizes for winning Lee's Trees are from local artists?
Yes.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is Rossi. This, sorry, I'm sorry.
Good evening. So the first item in my agenda is Mr. Daley and Mr. Baskerville. Please, this is about the road dedication release of Noble Farm Drive. Mr. Baskerville has handouts, and he can explain it.
Actually, I didn't bring that up.
Oh, okay.
Hi, Robert Baskerville, Bedford Design Consultants, I'm here with Mr. Daley for the Noble Farm Commercial Park. In a short summary, because I'm not sure how much you were involved at the time, my firm did a residential subdivision of this property in the late 90s, and at the time, a road gets approved, 30-something lots, 34, whatever, 38, the houses were never built. In time, the town took the land for back taxes, rezoned it from residential to industrial, sold it to Noble Farm, then built three buildings, got a fourth room planned with planning board, but there's an old detail that's never cleaned up. When they took the property, they can do a merger of lots, so all of the 38 house lots disappear. But technically, they can't merge the old right away to the road. When the planning board approves right away, it's called a dedication, so you take a piece of land and be dedicated to a future road. Never got built, never got accepted, so the term we used to use was a paper street. It exists on paper, but it never got built. So in all the years since, it's never actually been released by the town. So it's an asset the town has, so you as the selectman have to release it. I went to the planning board last week and asked them to rescind and revoke the original subdivision, just to kind of make everything go away. So this is just kind of like, as I know, dotting on its I and crossing on its T to make all the old stuff go away. Otherwise, you've got this stain or cloud or title that some bank examiner 52 years from now can say, you never did that. So I think everybody's always known about it, but we've never actually cleaned it up. So we came tonight to ask you to release the dedication that is approved on that subject. Right?
Correct. We should have done this back in 2011, but the Daley's attorney said, oh, no, you don't need to do that, so we didn't.
So there's nothing negative that could happen from doing that?
It's negative if we don't do it.
Right.
Can I throw the attorney into the box?
No, I have an email to prove it.
It's just fun to do.
Yes, well, we have an email that already says.
We consolidated everything, and the first said, don't worry about the rest, yes, and that's kind of how it ended up, and we didn't really think about it until the mortgage and title issues come up and the banks start really looking, so that's kind of decided that we proved to get rid of it.
Do we have a?
Yes, we do.
So enter a motion, move to release the right-of-way that was dedicated on the Noble Farm subdivision plan from 2002.
Second.
The second, roll call vote, select man, but the select person, Casper, select from Brown. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. My second item is, I'm not sure if you remember or not, but a couple of years ago, we looked into expanding the parking lot at Little River Park because we had some parking issues. Well, we looked into, we looked into expanding it into the tree line, and then some ways to fix the existing parking lot, which will be done now. And at that time, it was determined that we didn't need it, but that ORYA said that we didn't need it. But what we have found is now, more than ever, since COVID, and people are using the pavilion, they're using the park, we've had a lot of issues with people parking on both sides of Route 155 and Love Lane to access the park, to access the park. So now is the time that we really need to get it done. All of us department heads have met to discuss it, we met with three different contractors to get three bids, our feeling is that if we're going to do it, now's the time to do it before the fair, because it's going to be 72 degrees on the fair day with a nice light breeze, so people at the fair will be plentiful, there won't be any place to park. I mean, it really kind of, to be modest, it is ridiculous, there's only 53 parking spaces for that park. So we have some money left over in the highway budget and the municipal aid budget that we feel we can cover the bidder. The lowest bid is $52,000, he's done a lot of work for town from over a million dollars project to redoing some fire ponds in town, so we have no reason to think that the little bidder is not the person to go, company to go with. They have several crews, and they could jump on this in the next couple of weeks to get this done for the fair. Here's a map that Steve drew of it. There's no, we had a soil scientist up there, there's no wet soils to worry about, so we would like the board's blessing to get it done. And then in conjunction with that, Mr. Bullock has also got the six-by-sixes to put in the existing parking lot. Along Route 155, there's some rocks, but it was actually with Ann Tappin's suggestion, and it's a great suggestion, to put six-by-sixes there, similar to what's on the opposite side, to more guide people into their parking spaces, and we will get a few more parking spaces that way as well.
Sounds great.
I'd like the state, do you have any issues? This is coming out of your pocket.
He's been working with us, too.
So I'll just, while Steve's coming up to the podium, I will fill the board in on the financial aspect of this. So Steve and I sat down last week and went over the balances in his highway budget, and added in the expenses that just haven't hit the budget report yet, and what he anticipates spending, plus the payroll dollars. So it looks as if the highway budget for fiscal '21 will end with about $50,000 in it. In addition, you may recall, back in October of 2019, we received municipal aid from the state of New Hampshire, and the fiscal '20 municipal aid had to be accepted by the board under 3195B as unanticipated revenue, which means that revenue sits there and the board can determine how you want to spend it. $35,000 of it was allocated for the Clay Lane gravel pit project, and we've spent just under $26,000 of it, which leaves about $18,000 that we're asking the board to apply to this parking lot project.
Steve, comment?
I think the financials will work out, I just think they'll work. I just, if we miss something, and the highway budget goes over after this money gets taken out, I just want to make sure that it's not going to come back on me.
Well, we should have enough money.
We should.
Between the municipal aid, you have 15 left in your budget to.
Yeah.
You have some, you have some equipments you want to purchase.
Yeah, and that's included in there.
And we've got sand and salt, and a whole lot of things happening between now and the end of the year.
The end of the year, isn't it?
You feel good about that?
Yeah, because that's what Julie just stated when we sat down and went over it. We should be all right.
Okay.
I have questions. Steve, can you point out in this where exactly the parking lot is? I'm making some assumptions, so if you can point that out. Also, it appears that you're interfering with two of the trail systems, so if you can.
I'm going back to the parking lot here, so this is the parking lot.
So I'll speak to, on those trails, just kind of like, so the trail that goes, will go through the parking lot is the snowmobile trail?
Yep.
So this winter, any winter, it won't be paved, which, and actually will benefit the snowmobilers, this means it won't be plowed, they can park in the existing parking lot and go on that trail.
Yep.
So it's, and then the other trail that's there, it's probably from me to that wall away, that we can either move it up at the edge of the parking lot, or they can just cut from the edge of the trail to the, it's just like the short distance to the electrician.
Any issues with the DOT? Because you're increasing usage of that particular space?
No.
Nothing? Let me also have the Conservation Commission take a look at it, I know there's no wetlands.
Sure, I can go to the next Conservation Commission meeting.
Yeah.
Do you want to?
It's Mr. Raub.
Ann Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones Road. I have comments from Dawn Jeans, who, I'd like to start with comments from Dawn Jeans, who's the chair of the CC, she is out of town, and she has some concerns she would like me to convey to the board. The major one is that the Conservation Commission has not seen a map of the project. And then there's some, she has some considerations for this proposal that should include, and you know, just addressed the one about the trails for walking with snowmobiles, that they're allowed to continue through the area, that the runoff be directed away from the neighbor's property, and that a vegetated buffer of native shrubs and trees remain or be planted between the parking lot and the neighbor's land.
Can you hold on one second? If I can address that.
Yep.
So we reached out to Joneson Beach, they told us we have, what we did, what we have to build, a detention, little detention pond, which is in design, and I've spoken with Ian Butter today, and we're going to meet with her Friday at 9:00. And we told her that if she's not, we are leaving a 50, 75-foot wooded strip, and if that's not sufficient for her, we'd offer to plant some type of shrubs to, but we're not going to know until we cut the trees, and she was fine, she was happy to work with us, and like I said, we're meeting with her Friday at 9:00. Didn't we meet with the Conservation Commission?
Yep.
No.
Sorry, I just wanted to address those.
Yes, we did talk about that. So now, now it's me speaking, so those are Dawn's comments. So I am not speaking for the commission, but I am speaking as a commission member. I was the commission, the CC representative to the Little River Park Parking Lot Expansion Committee. The meetings took place primarily in October of 2019. The parking committee talked about a phased plan, including improvement of the existing parking area by installing how-to-park signs, replacing the rock border with a wooden guardrail, which you just mentioned, and various expansion options, including expanding towards Furbur Drive. CC members were kept informed about the parking lot committee discussions. Karen Rossi asked a wetland scientist to look at the area toward Furbur Drive as there is a quote "wet pocket" in the middle. His assessment was that there are wet soils as designated by the town, and the area was flagged. Those is from my meeting notes of October 29th of 2019.
We're staying away from that. That's in the far left-hand corner, we're not going near that?
Well, it says it was flagged, the flags are not there anymore. No official decisions were ever made by the commission, as no specific project was ever proposed to the commission. The commission has not seen a map of the area currently under consideration. As of this afternoon, there are no stakes, flaggings, or markers of any kind at the proposed expansion site. The commission meets July 6th. I expect that the commission would be interested in putting this proposal on the agenda for discussion and scheduling a site block.
Yep, so we're not going near that corner where the wet soils is, we're staying away from there. I'd be happy to go to the Conservation Commission, it would be great if you could make a contingent upon their approval, just so we can, I'll go next week, yep, that'd be great.
Can I ask you another question? You mentioned Joneson Beach, they're not on here, where are they?
They're an engineer. They do good parking lot design. I wanted to make sure, Steve thought, maybe we wanted to make sure we didn't need an alteration in terrain permit, so I called him.
So no expenses from Joneson Beach?
Correct. Oh, it was free.
John? John Tappin?
John Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones Road. I'm not speaking against the parking lot, because we've known for years that it was needed, but the requested action, quote, approve expanding the Little River Park parking lot to 75 feet by 250 feet, is not what's being planned. The existing parking lot is already larger than that in both directions. It appears that the approval is for constructing a second parking lot, and that that's what's being requested, but of course, no maps or site plans have been published. This should be explicitly stated. The Select Board recently stated that all town construction projects should follow the same rules as others are required to follow. If the board approves this request without changes or conditions, it will be clear that we're not following this policy. There were two quotes published in the agenda, and I compared them, and they were remarkably different. Both of them clear and remove the stumps. JAMCO DPW helps with hauling the stumps. ARASA does not list DPW assistance. Both of them strip the tucks. Both of them strip the topsoil, but Jamco DPW helps with hauling the topsoil. Rasa does not list DPW assistance. Jamco constructs retaining ponds and installs town provided erosion stone. Rasa does not list this. Both install culvert pipe. Rasa lists the pipe diameter and length, and it sounds like they may provide the pipe, but that's not explicitly stated. Rasa lists grading and compacting. Jamco does not. As the site is not leveled, grading and compacting is important. Neither quotes, neither quote states any specification or source for the gravel. And note that the two quotes are addressed to two different people. So it's not even clear that the two companies responding were responding to the same request. Again, I'm not speaking against the parking lot expansion because it's been needed for years. But I am talking about the process. I know that there's a time element because the end of the fiscal year is two days away. But the process doesn't look good to an observer.
I appreciate those comments and those are exactly the same questions I asked Karen earlier today. So I'm really glad that we.
So as far as expansion, so in, in my P brain, you're going into the existing parking lot and you're creating a connection from one to another. So you could argue is it a new parking lot or is it an expansion? It's, as far as the names, they just send them to, Rasa knows Steve better, Jamco knows me better, so as far as.
I sometimes get mail for a lane, I'll be a.
Right. Yeah, so it's not, and I think that.
But we discussed it, that those pipes are in there, that they're both using the same stone, that the pipes were actually in both plants just went in that line them as well. So that's, I, I agree, those are the exact same concerns.
And as far as Rasa, I don't know why he didn't, maybe he doesn't want the town to haul, because we're going to reuse the, once you cut the trees and the top, the underneath, we're going to take that at the.
Good soil.
Right, so we're going to put that at the transfer station. And we have rocks, so that keeps down the stone. Why Rasa didn't include that, I don't, I don't know. But like I said, Jim, we've got no reason, Jamco's done many jobs in town and they've done a great job and.
Yeah. That was the same concerns I had, so I appreciate that. I felt like they were addressed.
And like I said, I'll happily go to the conservation commission, meet them, sidewalk, whatever.
My biggest concern was the runoff and making sure we're really taking care of that, making sure that we're making ahead and we're doing the best we can. Looked like, you know, we went through it all, the stones. We've discussed it and you made it clear that that was a very important part of the project.
And that's with Joneson Beach, that make sure you have the pond to collect the runoff.
Right.
Do you want to speak to the runoff? Why you're designing them? You're the project designer.
Yeah, I put the pond where I did, because currently there's a makeshift pond already in the woods. We're moving it over 50 feet and all that water collects everything from the hill and the whole entire park drains through a pipe and then down the side of that.
Great.
Parking lot that's there now into that. So we're just moving it over and the water is going to now go into the pond, an actual, an actual constructed pond, not just a hole dug in the ground.
So there's one currently there. That's the wet part that they mentioned in the corners, a different one. And then you move that over.
Yes.
But the wet part that's in the corner is not being touched and nothing's going to do that. Okay.
A couple of things, the map that you provided, can you provide that to the public so people can see what it, what is being proposed, so people can see it?
Yes.
And I agree with Mr. Tappin, you know, I've always said, I'll just say, I've always said that anything the town does has to go through the same process that somebody was doing at, at their house. So I assume this would be a planning board thing?
So it's up to the, if you would like the planning, if the select board wishes for the planning board to hold a public hearing, that's up to the select board. So the RSA on governmental uses of town property is that it's up, the select board can hold a public hearing or the planning board can hold a public hearing, asking for, you know, input from anybody as to what should, and then they have to give a letter to the applicant 30 days after the meeting. If that's what you wish to do, what this.
I would like the planning board to do the public hearing and go through the process just like anybody else would.
So can I just ask a question? So I don't know why someone would put a parking lot at their house, but I just assume somebody wants to do that. Would they have to go through planning board approval?
No. And the planning board could decide that this isn't a big enough change you used to hold a public hearing. That's up to the planning board, then you guys would have to do that.
Then make that decision. What I'm trying to get away from, this is me personally, what I'm trying to get away from is somebody coming and saying, well, wait a minute, the town just did that, I want to do that, and you didn't go through the process. How can you respond to a customer, resident when that happens?
Right.
So I want us to go through the same process that Joe or Josephine Smith would go through to do the same kind of thing. And I understand in terms of not too many people have big parking lots, but what if it's a commercial business? So it's the same kind of thing to me, so.
Now, the planning board did hold a site plan review for this, a whole project back in 2005, just so everybody knows that.
And what happened with that?
Thought that was great, it was well received and.
And unfortunately, the parking lot was originally supposed to be bigger, but during the process of construction or planning, the old house foundation was found and I think we lost 30 parking spaces or something like that.
Yeah, we pulled it in and then we. That's right.
We're, we're trying to make up ground.
And unfortunately, we're against the clock because if we're going to do this, we should do it for the fair, so we can enjoy a fair day and not have parking issues on fair day.
Right. So we have to funding that, but we won't have it in a month.
Well, you don't have it after Thursday.
If you make a motion to approve it, subject to.
Yeah, but you need a purchase order, I thought, or some kind. How can you cover?
We'd need a contract agreement.
Yes.
Which if the board approves, we could have by the 30th.
Well, in terms of the things that are different between the two, I would want those particular things filled out in terms of what they're covering, what they're not.
Sure.
So.
That's, that's not a problem. Yeah. You just want it more itemized.
Yep. The other thing that I would want is specifically how much is going out of each of these funds? You've got not to exceed 52,000 funds to come from highway department operators and the public. I want in that more particular motion, how much is supposed to come out of each one of those?
Well, you could say 18,000 is coming out of the fiscal 20 municipal aid funds and the balance to come out of the highway operating.
That's fine, just stipulating.
Can we call in?
Yes, Ann. Ann Tappin?
Thank you. Ann Tappin, again, just to, parking lot is too small. That's acknowledged. The total number of spaces currently available is either 87 or 89. And I just happened to come across a map that Randy did quite a while ago. And because of the cellar hole setback, there were 16 spaces that were lost. But that's, you still are left with the 87, I'm pretty sure is the number, so just.
I don't think we have 87 parking spaces.
I'm pretty sure that it's around, yeah, it is.
Well, I think the, the problem too is the only reason, the only way we ever get maximized is if it's lined.
Well, and the other thing that was talked about was to put some signs up because people, they, they pull in straight ahead and you're supposed to go off to the side. So there's a whole lot, lot of factors. But anyway, the total number is, I believe it's 87 and the number of lost was 16 and that still left the 87.
And where's the drawing?
Um, some, I see, it's, he put it in the green.
Oh. One drawing.
We just got it too, didn't we?
Yeah.
I want to know the.
We're trying to decide if we're going to go ahead and say yes, this parking lot with a lot of stipulations so that we have the funding that we need to move forward and can get it done quickly because we have a, a group that's ready to go ahead and get started on this project so that it's ready for us and we really need it for our big event. So I think that's the thing is that we can, I absolutely agree, we should absolutely go through the proper channels. I agree 100%. I don't foresee any challenges. I think even the conservation commission's on board, everyone seems, the board's, I have no problems, you know, can we just have that one flexibility in there to see if that contracts?
Can I get the contract more detailed for the board tomorrow? We don't have. Either the board agrees to it tonight.
Right.
Or the board agrees to have a special meeting before the 30th to take it up again.
Right.
The board can't approve something.
The numbers aren't going to change.
Right.
John Tappin, 187 Stepping Stones Road again. I'm not opposed to the board approving this with conditions. The drawing has 75 foot dimension on it. There's no layout of what the parking spaces are going to be. There's no number of parking spaces to be achieved with this addition. I'm having a very hard time being nice.
Would you like my draft memory of parking spaces for you?
Yes, you, I mean, to, to just show a big rectangle and say, this is the addition and this is why it's 75 feet. I mean, first off, our zoning requires that parking stalls be 20 feet deep, aisles be, be 22 feet wide. So we have an aisle and parking on both sides, 20 feet, 22, 20 feet, 62 feet. So the first thing is, so where's the 75 foot dimension come from or the 250 foot dimension? How do things fit in there?
Town staff was trying to accomplish this project.
Yes, it was absolutely.
I understand that. And so what I'm asking is that one of the conditions be that you do publish, so the public knows, what is this going to achieve? Because remember, you are spending highway department funds and other funds for recreation purpose.
We were trying to get it done by this deadline.
Yes.
We're trying to get it done without expending more money on engineers and consultants. So.
I'm very comfortable going forward as long as we have the stipulations that we've discussed. There's no reason not to, it makes sense, we need the space, we've talked about it, had it in the past.
So do we want to just amend this motion to include a planning, planning board approval or?
If the planning board chooses not to do a public hearing, I mean, I can strong-arm them to do a public hearing. So the planning board will hold a public hearing. The plan will be amended to add the number of parking spaces. Just writing this down.
And that plan will be the final nicely planned with consideration.
Add parking detail to the plan. Jamco's, Jamco's price will be detailed to match Rasa's. What else am I missing? Conservation Commission?
So there, the commission may have conditions to suggest, so a meeting and a sidewalk.
Yep, okay.
And that that be staked, flagged, so people, so we know what we're looking at when we're out there, or anyone that goes out there.
Okay.
Okay.
And 18,000 to come from the municipal aid.
Want me to just amend this motion?
The balance to come from the highway operating budget.
And also the clarification of this, expanding the lot to 75 by 25?
Yep, to get the numbers.
Yep.
Correct. Is that the method it's being expanded?
Max, maximum expansion.
That's, yes, that's.
Why.
That's why it's not the size of the whole thing.
Correct.
That's right, okay.
Yep. 18,000 to come out of the municipal aid budget and the balance to come out of the highway operating budget.
Which is 36.
Very okay. Now, all right, well.
34?
34.
Do we want to, what about the signs?
As part of that package, which doesn't have any financial bearing on this board. Steve has ordered the six by sixes, they're coming with the guardrail for Old Mill Road.
Okay, so we would have a signage that's been suggested as well?
Yes. Great, yep. We talked about that as Ann said in 19, then COVID hit and.
Okay, without on the plan.
Yep.
I'd like to enter a motion, move to approve expanding Little River Park Parking Lot to 75 feet by 250 feet at a cost not to exceed $52,000. Balance to come from FY21 Highway Operating Budget and the 18,000 from FY20 Municipal Aid Funds and to authorize the Public Works Director to enter into a contract with Jamco Excavators LLC to perform said work. Can I get a second?
I second that.
If you get a second.
I second that, yeah. Got it.
Uh, let's see, roll call, vote, selectmen.
I think with these things that Karen's written down in terms of the stipulations, can you read those into the municipal?
The planning board hold a public hearing. Add the parking detail to the plan. Jamco's price detailed to match Rasa's. Conservation Commission, address, meet with the conservation commission and address any possible concerns and parking lot to be staked out prior to the meeting.
Also a sidewalk for the commission?
Well, that would be up to the commission.
Okay.
So if the motion or in the second or I mean, with that particular.
Yes, I am.
Roll call, everybody?
We have to vote now, so Mr. Wibbey?
Yes.
Miss Casper, Beth's guess. So you just get to vote.
Brown, yes.
Thank you all.
The Town Hall Restoration Committee, who's speaking for them?
Number Steve Bullock. Number six.
Oh, number six, I'm sorry, my apologies. I'm sorry, Steve Bullock, Public Works Director.
So the highway department would like to purchase a debris blower, also known as a buffalo We would use this for blowing ditch lines out, cleaning the roads off. A few years ago, we borrowed the one that Lee Speedway had and we tried it and it worked out really, really well. We were going to try to purchase one last year, but with COVID, we weren't in the funding. We weren't sure how the revenues were going to be, so we didn't try for it. This year, we're doing better, so we figured we'd get the quotes and try for it. So I got three quotes. Fitch Services is an actual buffalo turbine. They're $8,400. Turf Co., which is sold through MTE Solutions in Dairy, is 76.30 and 40 cents. And then Atoro is 86.0904. So I would recommend going with MTE Solutions Turf Co. brand. When we look through everything, they all have the same exact motor, the same turbine. So essentially, they're the same thing. It just, you get into the point where you're just buying a name.
We don't need to buy any.
And then the other issue is Fitch Services, so that sells buffalo turbines down, the only place to get it is in Southern Mass and then Toro's in Western Mass and MTE Solutions is in Dairy. So.
No tax.
We wouldn't pay tax anyway because we're a town, a municipality, but as far as if we needed anything, Dairy's a lot easier than Springfield, Massachusetts.
Any questions? Source of funds?
It should be the highway operating budget.
Make a motion to authorize the Public Works Director the purchase of the debris blower from MTE Equipment Solutions for a price not to exceed $7,630.40 from the FY21 Highway Operating Budget. Can I get a second?
I second that.
Roll call, vote, selectmen, Wibbey?
Yes.
Select person, Casper? Selectman Brown, yes. Motion passes.
And then the next one on the list is painting the roads. I've been trying to get the roads painted for three months, but there's no paint. The, all the epoxy they used to make the paint was in Texas and when it froze this past winter, all the pipes froze and they lost it all. And in the agenda packet, there's things from the federal highway about it. And as a result of all this, and there's nothing in the future that indicates it going down, the price for paint is going through the roof. I tried to get a company called Markings Inc. to give me a price. They do new market, they wouldn't give me a price. They're not taking new customers. Industrial traffic line. Industrial traffic lines is who we've used for the past three years. And that's the only company I could get to give us a price to come paint. So that's why there's only one.
And we can't wait here because it will not be safe, is that correct?
Yeah, the plows peel it all off, so we usually do it once a year. So I would like to sign a contract with them for $7,782.75 to paint 57,650 feet of yellow, double-yellow line on town roads. And that would come out of the rented equipment. Line item of the highway budget.
Questions?
I'm off it.
You all, sir?
I'm off it. We need it, we need it.
Right, I'd like to enter a motion to authorize the public works director to enter into a contract with industrial traffic lines to paint 57,650 feet of double-yellow line in the town's lead for a price of $7,782.75. Can I get a second? Second. Roll call, folks, selectmen Wibbey.
Yes.
Select person Casper.
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes, motion passes.
Transfer station.
Oh, you want me to do it?
Well, you had talked about it, so.
Oh, just because I have the grand idea doesn't mean I have to commit it. We'll see how grand it is, these two problems.
Yes.
Yeah.
As you both know, we have a labor issue in the transfer station. And what I'd like us to consider is possibly increasing a new full-time benefited position that initially is helping out the transfer station until that particular labor issue gets resolved. And I think depending on how it gets resolved, if it gets resolved in a positive light, that person can go and be a highway person.
Great.
If that particular situation doesn't get resolved, it's no difference in what it is right at the moment.
I love it.
So, and one of the things we tried, this is a little history. We tried a part-time benefited position. And Steve, you've got more information than I do. I don't remember. But you had some interviews and they thought the pay was way too low that we were offering.
I called, I didn't interview, I called and talked to them because they were under the impression it was a full-time position. And they also wanted a lot more than what the position would pay.
So I think that's something we need to consider because you've got some staff people there that in terms of what these people are looking for are getting paid way less than what they're expecting. And as we all know, there's a labor shortage out there, if you will. So I think we need to address this particular issue. And I'd like to propose that we explore this. And maybe, depending on what Steve thinks, maybe we structure the position that it's kind of like the transfer station initially. And then depending on what happens, then they're kind of like a highway person after that, maybe, possibly. And I know you're in charge of both groups, so I don't know if we could create something like that that's kind of like a dual kind of position.
Yeah.
To give you the flexibility to move them wherever you need them.
I would like that and make it, have a requirement to have a CEO with us so they can plow in the wintertime.
That's a B, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Well, they could have an A, but at least a B.
At least a B. So I think that's something that we need to consider. But depending on what we're offering this position, I think we need to relook at what we're getting, what we're paying the current staff over there. Because I think I would not want us to hire somebody that's higher than what we've got people there already.
I'm a little confused. If there's a conversation here, I don't, I don't understand what's already been done with this. You've met with employees or something?
No.
Not, okay.
No, it's just, I know the issue that Steve's having because he sends out correspondence to us. And that's something I just came up with, you know?
Okay.
Sitting in altis in your hotel room, because there's nothing else to do, you just think about things. And this is one of the things I was thinking.
And this is exactly the kind of thing I was trying to get us to do last time.
Wasn't thinking about the parking lots?
What?
You weren't thinking about the parking lot?
I didn't know about the parking lot.
Okay.
You didn't give me any information about the parking lot.
I think the thing that we have to realize when we spoke with even other towns is that this is a huge problem that is facing towns on all different levels. It's not just the transfer station, it's not just.
I'm sorry, what's the problem?
Staffing.
Staffing.
And salaries, and they're changing.
It's not just a transfer station.
Right. And with everyone talking about $15 an hour, things are changing all around. You gotta meet people at the grocery store more, at the, you know, McDonald's more. So we're going to have to do some really deep dives around salaries in all these departments because it's not just that we lose the person that we have. It's that I'm not sure we can always replace them. And when you lose somebody, you lose all that money in training. And so that's really a big concern. So I think.
Didn't we have a conversation about doing some kind of survey?
Yes, yeah, and looking into those things. But I think in this particular crisis situation, we have to be a little limbo on our feet.
We've already had the police chief come to us and express his things, you know, his concerns about his particular department. And I agree with Katrin, it's not just one particular place, it's all over the place. So.
We're going to be facing budgeting issues going forward because it's not.
There's no doubt about it.
Yeah.
We're going to be facing.
So I think one of the things coming up in terms of the budget season that I would like us to focus on is relooking at all those particular salaries. Not just the police department, the transfer station, but all the departments. If we have to pay to have MRI do a study, maybe that's what we need to do. But I think we need to go and look. And the labor market has changed dramatically in the last year and a half, two years. So I think we need to address it. And if we want people in that particular service, that's transfer stations, the service industry, we have to find people that are qualified and that are willing to do the work.
On the other hand of that, another side of that is I think there's also a chance for us to really do a deep dive into, are there jobs that can be combined? Are we, do we need to continue to add staffing? Are there ways we can work through it? I know I'm talking to the town of Mabry and some other towns that there are some big concerns and wondering how we could maybe work together in some areas so that we do have some, you know, maybe there's, as you're adding to everyone's salary, that money has to come from somewhere. So are there places we can, little things down? So I think we have to do a deep dive so we're physically responsible.
So you're already in this thing? You're already doing some work on it, whatever?
Yes.
Talking to people, et cetera, right? Okay, so.
She is not me. Um, she is not me. I just came up with the idea.
Yeah.
You did more talking than she did. That's the only reason.
Well, I thought he was going to talk, so I wasn't going to win.
And then I don't think as helpful as it would be currently to reduce the hours in there, I think.
Some angry people.
Yeah. And I'm going to be the one that gets the brunt of the angry people, so.
Our responsibility is the residents of the town, and that's our job. Our job is to figure these problems out. And I think it's important that we are doing this responsibly. This solves the problem.
So can we task the public works director and the town administrator to draft a job description that entails the transfer station responsibilities, but as well as the highway department responsibilities as well?
Does that be like a peak builder?
Yeah, because people flow already, so.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, the ideal world would be every single person would have a license and every single person would, it would be a transfer station staff and it wouldn't be a highway department staff. It would be.
Public works.
Public works, and everyone would do everything.
Which is what's happening anyway.
Yeah, and you just get to the point where you, and then you can rotate weekends so everyone's not working a weekend all the time and stuff like that.
So a lot of people, so.
The other thing I would ask them to do at the same time, the town minister, well, I asked the town minister providing me how much those people are making. But I would look to you and maybe the town administrator as well to propose what those changes to those salary rates would be. You know, I'm not sure what you can get a person for. But I would hate for us to hire a new person and have them come in at a hourly rate that's higher than what we're already paying those people. You've got some people that have extensive experience, specifically one. And I would not want to do that. So if you have to come at a certain rate, we need to bump up those particular people.
Yeah.
So if you can bring those recommendations back to us.
Yeah.
That's what I would ask the board to consider.
I, I asked to do that and at least part of it non-public that way.
Okay.
Because we're talking about what some people are making in order to achieve the end goal.
So, no one's asked about money.
I like money.
So this is at a minimum a $50,000 addition to the budget. Upwards of 65, or if you're talking about increasing salary from what people in the transfer station are paying now, then it's north of $65,000.
And since the budget's already been done, where is that? I know we have not been using the budget at all at the transportation currently, but there's no way to move that forward, correct, for me?
Correct.
Hours. So how do we?
We'll have to find the money. All right, I, I don't think the possibility of continuing to have Steve and the other transfer station people covering, you're burning out your staff. You cannot do that.
And then you'll lose them all.
So we need to do something, and we'll just have to find where those particular funds come from. I know the health insurance line is pretty tight, so we're going to have to look in terms of where those particular money's come from.
You sure you're Scott Borden?
I know.
I'm waiting on him.
I hate doing this, but necessitate, you've got to provide those particular services to the town.
We're facing a lot of problems.
Just, so currently, right now, we're trying to fill 72 lost hours, man-hours in the transfer station in what we're doing, and we're falling behind in other stuff. So.
Okay.
We are at number seven, the town hall recreation. Uh, renovation committee, sorry.
I agree.
Recreation committee. Very seldom recreation.
Do you want to do it? You want to do it? You, you can do it because I'm confused last time.
You want to do it with anybody?
Yeah, very confused. You are firmly on this side of the table, if that's the background.
Necessarily, I want to be outside.
You're the Venn diagram.
Sure. John Tappan, speaking as a member of the town hall renovation committee. And I think first I need to apologize that we said at your last meeting we'd bring to you a draft charge for the next town center committee. And what we presented to you is an informal draft because we had a meeting scheduled, but we did not have a quorum. And so the committee has not had a chance, what you received, the committee has not had a chance to review this in public meeting and debate and decide just how extensive it should be. So I took our existing charge. And the first couple of paragraphs there are basically copied from the existing charge. And then for the bottom section there where it says the, oh, we did come up with a new name. Again, we haven't voted on it, but more people suggested the name like this. And that was Town Center Planning Committee. And then the items that are listed there for the TCPC will do came from our previous presentation.
I'm sorry.
TCPC. Came from our previous presentation where we talked, where we talked about what were the next steps. And boiling those four pages of next steps down to these tasks, that's what's listed. The, um, there is one addition there, which is kind of a carryover from our existing charge right now, and that's about ADA. I was asked last week if we had a document that showed all of the ADA deficiencies, what are their costs, and what is our plan or schedule for fixing those. And we have most of that information, but it's not in a single document where you can call up a document and show it. So that's why that's listed. Again, the board, I mean, the committee has not had a chance to vote or debate on this. So can try to answer any questions you have. It's being presented because we said we'd bring it to you. And it is a work in progress, but this is what we have so far. The people that made some input to it think that it's a pretty good basis. So.
You know, sometimes I get a little confused with the word holistic. It's used, it's used to be being used more and more now. We're going to do this holistic approach to it. Which originally was a medical term coming out of Switzerland. You know, holistic approach to medicine and the practice of medicine. It was interesting because I wanted to see just exactly how you would apply it to a construction job or whatever. But holistic isn't in the Webster Standard Dictionary. It's not even there. So I'm trying to understand when we say we're going to take a holistic approach to it. What's going to change, what's going to change? Because I also went in and I pulled, actually, these pulled. Thank you very much. The charges from the past five years to see how much, you know, how much variation there was and what the direction was. And you're going to see a lot of the same language used in each one of them. We never used holistic, but, but, you know, all of them kind of gave us the same, the same words, if you will. And I'm just wondering, what's going to, what's holistic going to do for this new charge? You think that's going to let us get to wherever it is we're trying to go?
Holistic in this context was not in my lexicon either. It was the library architect from SMP that introduced it when we talked about the need for addressing the town center design. All of the, the, all of the buildings, the parking, the septic, the handling of runoff from those surfaces, parking and roofs, that you should not do it piecemeal, building by building. Rather, you should look at all of the buildings, the parking, the whole area, and do it comprehensively. So, so the idea here is that you're looking at all of the town center planning. Right now, I, we mentioned this in our previous presentation. We have the opportunity, if you look at it this way, that all of the buildings at the town center are in play over the next few years. We're deciding their future for every one of those buildings. We're talking about rehabbing some of them, renovating some of them, adding to some of them. Questions about whether we're keeping some of them? And all of that is to be determined in whatever construction we're going to do.
But John, I'm sorry, haven't we been doing that in the past? For the past five years or whatever? We're doing those same things?
In previous iterations of town center committees, TCVC one and TCVC two and so forth, yes. Some of them did have plans for all of the buildings. More recently, we've had a town hall renovation committee, which has been looking at the town hall. It was the town hall renovation committee that brought up the issues about the septic system, the parking and the well. And we've had library trustees working on the library project independently. And specifically, when it came up to the question about hiring an engineer to do the site design, what was being planned was a site design for, that would address runoff from the library building, which is very close to the block. And it is pointed out by, both by our committee and by the conservation commission that when you want to address runoff from those impervious surfaces, you need to do it for the whole site. You should not try to do it for one building at a time, especially when you know that there are future plans of changing the parking lot that's there. And, and possibly expanding the parking lot considerably in the future if there's a new office building there. parking lot considerably in the future, if there's a new office building there, which is also in the plan. So, that's where the holistic, the term came from. I first heard it from that architect, and he was talking about what I had just expressed in different words, which is, you look at all of it together. And... So, that's what's different from the road that we have been on up until a few months ago, when things came to a stop. Our committees were looking at things independently, and we're saying, we shouldn't do that. We should look at all of it together.
Does the committee, I guess I should ask the chairman, does the committee?
You're the chair.
I'm talking about the chairman of the...
Oh.
Of the TC, whichever it is. Okay, that's what I'm...
THRC.
THRC. The THRC.
Or THD. It's the town administrator called it today.
THD.
Anyway.
Anyway, so the THRC, I mean, if you, I assume you've talked about all this, talked about these changes, et cetera, et cetera. Does the committee itself feel good about going forward with this holistic approach? I mean, look, I just, I went through each one of these charges, and there just isn't that much, you know, there's just not that, that much changing in the words saying, here's where we wanna go. What's, what's changing, and it's not changing, is we're not going. And, and so, you know, and that's, that goes back to 2012. So, I'm just not, now I'm concerned about the committee itself. I mean, are they, are they getting burned out as far as this whole thing? Or no?
I think they're optimistic, but they're in, they wanna see, they wanna see something done, and they wouldn't be spending their time and their efforts if they thought this was totally fruitless. So, I think they wanna see something done and something completed and things to move forward. I think the biggest thing that's in this particular charge, excuse me, is number three. Number three has to be one of the things, because that's gonna allow us as a group, just three, three of us, to figure out what we can afford and what we can't afford. Is it gonna be an eight-year plan? Is it gonna be, whatever it happens to be, in terms of getting these particular things done?
So, number three discusses the financial planning tool.
Yes, because we have to figure out what we can afford, what we can't afford.
Which I think would be good for us to have some time to work on absolutely, as we're dealing with all these other issues.
Yep. So, that's the big thing. That's the big thing, because from this particular group has to be, okay, what can we afford? How are we gonna pay for it? And then, you can send off your committees to do whatever they need to do. And I think the committee, the THRC, is looking for that particular direction in terms of, and they're totally capable of doing whatever we ask them to do, and they're semi enthusiastic.
But you're looking at the entire complex, then? I mean, is that what you said?
That depends on what committee you send.
Every single thing?
That's what depends on what this...
Including the new Town Hall that's being talked about?
Yep.
Somewhere in there?
Yep, and there's other things that have come up in terms of, you know, changing some things around too, so, you know? So, they're optimistic. I don't know how many more years they can go, but, you know...
And, does it, okay, you take that approach, does it interfere with the library, what they're doing?
Yes.
Yeah. It does.
Yeah. What is it? 'Cause you're looking at it, not to use the word too many times, but holistically, if you're looking at the whole site, you just can't chop that up in the middle, could you?
No, but you can't just move in and take over what people have been working on for a year or two years or whatever, either.
It's all the town's business, so...
But that talks well, but in fact, you have individual committees that are...
Karen Rossi was...
And they need to be involved.
To say something about the importance of the financial planning. Our committee has recognized for quite a while that we have been working on something that the town cannot afford. When, when we put that financial planning tool together, and we put in everything that's in the CIP, plus the items that the board has approved, plus what we see as, and the cost that we got estimates for, for the needs for our town buildings, we recognize that the town is not, cannot afford that. And that means that some priorities have to be set. And our committee is enthusiastic for this, because we do not wanna be working on something that is a dead end. We don't wanna produce a plan that you can't afford.
I understand.
And to be working on a plan that the town doesn't have the money for, that's, that's an enthusiasm killer.
Can we call in a...
Wait, excuse me.
So, I have a suggestion. If I recall correctly, that there's been a subcommittee working on the town center since 2006, 2008, without a break. It's always been a subcommittee. We've spent almost three hundred thousand dollars, and we've got nothing. I would strongly suggest that you take a break from the subcommittee. Let this board figure out what they're gonna do, and where they're, because they can do all this work, which they've done, they've worked countless hours, and it comes here, and for various reasons, which all in which I am supportive, it goes nowhere. So, you just, so, until this committee, until the select board decides how much money, you're just, everybody else, the committees, and work with your town staff, I mean, we're all capable, and we have the pulse of the community between each and every one of us. You have a committee, which is a handful of people, which knows, or certain handful of people, but we deal with the community all the time. So, we have better idea of what's needed and what's gonna pass. So, take a break from...
He's very...
He is. So, my, my suggestion is take a break from this committee, I think, since that's 30th of June, am I right? And then regroup in a few months, when you, this, this board knows how much money can be spent, because you're just wasting their time.
And we don't like being wasted.
Right, 'cause you have plenty other things to do.
'Cause just in terms of number three of us, number three is participate with the select board to update the financial planning tool and make it an acceptable plan. That's kind of summary language for, in my eyes, this particular group goes through that particular tool with the department heads, seeks advice, says, okay, we need more information about that, send you guys, and ladies, out to get more information and come back to us.
Right.
Because some of those particular things are kind of explanatory, you kinda know, yeah, that's how much it costs.
Right.
Other things are kinda like swag.
Right.
And for us to determine, okay, that's included or that's not included, we probably need more information. So, I'm envisioning that's an iterative process.
Right.
So, we meet with those particular department heads, go over those particular things, maybe we meet together, maybe individually, but we go over each one of those things, because at some point, the board's gonna say, nope, we're not doing that, put it on the back burner.
Right.
Or, yeah, we're doing that, but we need more information. That's what I envision moving forward.
I owe, I owe Paul a chance to...
I'm not done. Why isn't that something that the select board can do with its department heads?
It can.
But I, I thought, it sounded to me like you were interjecting a committee.
No. No.
Okay, so when you said "they"...
He meant us.
They.
You meant the...
He likes to think of them as...
Yes.
You meant the select board.
Yes.
Right, because when you meet with your department heads, there's one, like, Steve will tell you this, and it's his, a sandwich salt shed is extremely important, and as many people don't agree with the daily building, which Julie will address later on, the funding, the Town Hall's all set. So, that's not a, that's a want, a new building is a want, but Steve's is a need, and, you know, the library was saying they're in need. So, there's more things that are in some people's mind, and mine, more important than renovating the old Town Hall. You know, there's more, there's only so much money to go around.
Definitely, there's always...
Wait, yes, Paul.
All right, I'm done. Sorry, Paul.
Sorry, you go.
Paul Gazowski, 46th Lane, 3 Lane. Twenty-five minutes ago...
I didn't talk that long.
I didn't time it, but it felt that way, maybe even longer. You were presented with a report, which, and you've been discussing a report, which wasn't part of the backup, or a document which wasn't part of the backup. So, we can be circulating single pieces of paper with drawn maps of parking lots, or we could be talking about a document which the public was not invited to see in the backup. This committee was the only committee, agenda item that didn't provide any backup for the discussion. It's not the first time this type of thing has happened. There have been many times when this committee presented information to the board and to the public unseen, perhaps even by the board, until it was presented. That's a process problem. Since process was part of the discussion earlier this evening, I would like to talk about process. The moment that Mr. Tappan got up here and said that the committee, the Town Hall Renovation Committee, hadn't had a chance to see the document, he should have said no. Because process would require the committee to have a chance to look at the document he proceeded to talk about for twenty odd minutes, maybe extrapolating or hoping to extrapolate some sort of reaction to get carried back to the committee. So, no, he should have said no, because they weren't ready to present in procedure and things that commonly happen, they simply weren't ready to present. The noble thing to do would have been said, we're not ready to present tonight, we'll come back when we're ready. Okay, part one. Part two, I've never seen a circumstance where a member of a board can chair a committee. Okay? And I don't know, you know, I don't know if there's any policy or regulation or not. I think it has presented enormously awkward circumstances. So, I agree with Karen Rossi that, let's give this committee a break, and let's let the board sit down and sort through some of this and figure out where the board wants to go. And while we're at it, let's do a little housekeeping about, you know, what's allowable and what's not allowable for board members, select board members who represent the committees. How do they end up in positions where they end up chairing committees? And then they have to sit in one chair and then move to another chair theoretically. I can go back maybe seven years ago, when another board member, it was an issue, actually it was related to the Brickham property and all the, the library on the Brickham property and stuff like that. There was a board member who actually did, at least got up from his board chair, went to the back of the room and voiced his comments, he forgot to do one thing, he forgot to say he was speaking as a member of the public. Now, I'll never forget that very distinct witness that struck me. I'm very much a process person, obviously. As earlier this evening, we came to you to present material that you hadn't seen, you saw it in your backup, you had a chance to weigh in on it, that should be procedure. If on your agendas, people don't provide backup, they are not ready to present. Thank you.
Any other comment?
Yeah, I wanna just, just say something, yes, if I could. Mandy Gazowski, Chair of the Library Trustees. We have been working to, with SMP, as Mr. Tappan has quoted quite a few times, and we wanna continue working with them. We have, as the Board of Trustees, have reordered our phasing, and we are meeting with one of the architects this coming Friday, so that we can go through the different things that we want to have happen now. We really want to continue to work on the renovation, we want to build the best of it, and if there is to be an addition, it's going to be third in the line if things to come. And we really feel that we should be able to continue.
Absolutely. Thank you. So, that, and that doesn't affect, that doesn't affect the, all the other things we're talking about, so there's no reason that we can't, as far as that, or renovating the library, there's no reason that we can't go forward?
Correct.
So, not, not the renovation extra, within the building that they have right now that they're working on, there's no reason that they can't go forward and do those things. They have the money, they have the, it's the space area, and so...
I'm trying to understand now where we are, but the THRC, have you presented everything that you wanted to present, or...
The thing that we presented was something that the board was expecting from this particular meeting.
Yeah, yeah. I just don't know if you had anything else to go with it, or that, was it?
Okay.
Okay, Julie Glover, Town Administrator.
Okay, one moment, just so, just so we're clear. So, the board, it sounds like, because you took no action, that the current Town Hall Renovation Committee will dissolve as of June 30th.
Yes. We're on hiatus, we're on vacation, we're in community...
Well, it no longer exists as of July 1st, so...
So, in place of that, is there a way that the, that we can start working together on the things that have been produced and keep moving forward quickly?
Yes, that would be my desire as well, for the board to start doing the meetings with the department heads and talk about the financial planning tool.
So, can we put that on the schedule for soon?
Sure. I think we need to talk about in terms of how that occurs.
I agree.
I mentioned in terms of what I was talking about, maybe we meet with them together initially, and maybe then we meet with them singly. Whatever the two of you think is...
Well, one of the things I certainly think should happen is that we should also, I think, having sat in now two, I think, planning board meetings, that it would be good to get somebody from the planning board involved in this also, because, because they speak the same language relative to, to the parking lots and the drainage and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, I really think that we should, we should have them involved in this process.
To a certain extent. This is the reason there's confusion between the financial planning tool and the CIP, those are two different things.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, okay. That's one of the reasons that we suggested the name change, so there's no confusion about what it is or what it's...
Well, we've got plenty of name changes.
So, would the board like to meet with all the department heads initially, for maybe an initial meeting, or go by singly, one by one, or what do you think?
I think getting everyone in the room together and sharing makes a lot of sense, if that's something that the department heads are willing to do.
Next board meeting or a separate meeting?
I feel like there's not enough time in the working.
So, a separate meeting?
I'm sorry? Separate meeting, definitely.
Separate meeting?
Yep.
So, when?
I'm free.
You're always free.
I'm free, I have a schedule.
Two o'clock on Wednesday?
No.
He's not free. Mr. Tappan?
I'd like to suggest to the board that they save themselves some time by first having the department heads update the input into that spreadsheet. Give them time, the board had asked last time they looked at it, how do we know how good these estimates are? So, now the spreadsheet, you don't just put in an estimate, you put in the estimate, the date of the estimate, there's a five-level grade for the quality of the estimate. If the estimate is from a previous year, that estimate is updated automatically. And I think it would save the board time if you ask the department heads to update, research, go back and look at their numbers, put those into the spreadsheet, the board gets a chance to look at the spreadsheet, and then the board talks to the department heads.
Great.
That would be my suggestion, and I think it would save time.
Sounds good.
So, may I propose, the next board meeting is at 12:00. Can I propose the 19th at 6:00? It's an off week for us.
Let me see, the magic, where is the kitchen? The 19th?
You said the 19th?
That sounds good.
6:00 PM, it's an off week for us, meeting-wise, so the meeting is dedicated just to that particular topic.
And we're asking the department heads to be there, so is that...
Yeah.
I mean, I'll go to the department heads, I guess, we have to ask them to.
They'll let us know if they can agree. And that will give them time to interact with Mr. Tappan and update their numbers.
I feel like you have some other...
To regard to Mr. Tappan's request, I think we should just have an initial meeting to see where we're even going with this.
Okay.
We may not put the correct information in, or all the information, and then we're gonna have to come back and readdress it.
Right.
So, I think we should just meet once, see where everybody is, and then we can have the information we need to do our inputs and not have to redo them a second time.
Great.
And that information was collected last fall? Assuming he took it from the CIP. So, those numbers were updated in November of last year, so then I would have...
All right. You don't want me to talk about those?
We'll, we will work on making sure we get the direct numbers and all the things we need to work on. But I do think if we understand what those things are, they're within, then we can deal with working with you and figuring out how to make those numbers and ask for the specific request. I think that makes sense.
So, can we have the meeting earlier?
Sooner, yes. So, Independence Day is not a good idea.
7th?
I can do that. Can you do the 7th?
It's Wednesday.
Can other people do the 7th?
The 7th?
Yes.
7th?
Of July?
It's a Wednesday.
Is that a possible date for you?
The 7th is...
A lot of people go on vacation for order of I, no, that's not a wrong? Okay. Great.
So, let's do the 7th.
I would have been away that. But me too.
It's what?
Me too, we would have been away.
No. So, let's do the 7th of July at 6:00 PM. And the department heads are... Cecilia are invited to...
I'm sorry, at what time did you say?
6:00, 6:00 on the 7th of July.
Okay. And if someone can't be there, we will figure out how to make sure that their voices are heard or I can be with them at whatever time, whenever we can hear you guys, whatever. Okay. Great.
And isn't getting the... July 7th, the Wednesday.
6:00.
Julie Glover.
So, we are having a public hearing on July 12th. We've scheduled a public hearing on July 12th for the board to take public input on the ARPA funds.
Yes.
This is required under R.C. 3195B because it is unanticipated revenue.
What time is that again?
So, it's a regular meeting.
Regular meeting.
At the regular meeting.
The start of the regular meeting, yes. I have been working with our auditor on the revenue piece. Although it is true that we did, that we did not lose revenue from '19 to '20, according to the formula under ARPA, we did lose revenue. ARPA takes a few things into consideration. They take the, what they call the base year, which is the first full fiscal year before the start of the pandemic. So, for us, that would be fiscal '19. That's considered the base year. They take that and compare it to the prior three fiscal years, so '16, '17, and '18. They use calendar year 2020 as the current year. And then there's some mathematical formulas that go into this. And it comes out with what they think our revenue should have been but for the pandemic. And any inconsistency is assumed to be because of the pandemic. So, based on the numbers that I've put in, but I still want to work with the auditor to make sure it's apples to apples. One of the things I'm running into is we changed auditors. So, '16, '17, and '18 are based on the audited numbers from Vashon, and '19 is from... Plotsak. Right now, it looks as if we might be able to use $150,000, anywhere from $150,000 up to the full $478,000 in the category of revenue loss. You may remember that there's four essential ways that we can spend the money. One of them is revenue loss. And if it's revenue loss, there's a great deal more latitude in what we can spend it on. So, revenue loss money can be spent on any kind, basically any kind of infrastructure project. So, that's the ARPA update. After July, the public hearing on July 12th, assuming that the board votes to accept the money, the board does not have to vote to, does not have to accept the money.
Great.
I would then go through the online application process. And then we get the money sent to us from the state via ACH, an ACH deposit. And we get just the first half, so half of $478,000. And then the other half comes a year later. Are there any questions? No? Okay. I guess we'll move on. There's no questions about the ARPA funding. General Services, General Assessing Services, RFP. We put an RFP out for our General Assessing Services. The contract with MRI expires the end of this fiscal year. And although it was sent directly to 23 firms, we received only one response. And that was from Municipal Resources, which is a firm that we've been using for a number of years. And I think there's a number of reasons for that. One, it's hard to get assessing workers. Like every other, many other industries, as we talked about earlier, it's very difficult for these firms to find people. Some firms have consolidated. Some of the firms may look and think, well, they've used MRI all these years. What are the risks of us putting a bid together? And then they actually accept us. Do we have the bandwidth to take on another client? And I think a lot of people just don't. So, at least that's what I've been able to glean from talking to a few people. So, at this time, I guess it's my recommendation to award Municipal Resources the contract. I think we should just go with the three-year term rather than going through this all again next year. MRI has been doing good work for us. I don't have any reason not to recommend them. So, that's what I'm recommending.
Well, we move to award Municipal Resources Inc. to General Assessing Services contract for a term of three years as presented. Can I get a second?
Second.
Do it. Roll call vote, Select and Buckbee? Yes. Select person, Casper?
Yes.
Select and Brown? Yes.
Thank you. It's also that time of year for the annual fuel bid. This year, in addition to Number Two Heating Oil and Off-Road Diesel, we put propane out. You may remember that we usually have propane as a three-year contract. It's the end of the three-year contract with D.F. Richard. You may also remember after last year, last year, three years ago. Last year? Wow.
They're all kind of...
It's all... We had to rebid, and so the language in our proposal changed that we now, we the school and we church congregational are awarded separately. We're not tied together. And the bidders don't indicate that there is any price difference if we all go with the same vendors or different. So, at this time, I would ask that we award the Number Two Heating Oil and Off-Road Diesel to Hardman Oil and Propane, and the propane to Suburban Propane, which would be a change. Irving Oil, you may have noticed, it may have sort of looked like they were low bidder, but there were so many conditions attached to their bid. The major one would have been to tie us to quantities, which is contrary to what's in the bid. And there would be penalties if we didn't buy enough or we bought too much. And that just feels too unwieldy and unnecessary. So, I recommend that we award it to...
I apologize where was D.F. Richard? I apologize, but I don't think we have.
D.F. Richard, then Suburban?
Yeah.
So, Suburban was point, if we went with a three-year contract, .44 over the rack price. And D.F. Richard was .58. So, we'll really see the point change.
And Suburban's going to give us new tanks, right?
They'll either get us new tanks or buy the tanks off of D.F. Richard.
Yep.
Enter motion and move to award the FY22 annual fuel bid as follows, per the bid submitted. Can I get a second? No.
You have to keep reading.
Yeah, what? What? Oh, you wanted me to read it? Number Two Heating Oil and Off-Road Diesel to Hardman Oil and Propane? Propane to Suburban Propane?
Second.
Roll call vote, Select and Buckbee?
Yes.
Select person, Casper?
Yes.
Select and Brown? Yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. So, you may recall that the board authorized moving forward with the creation of a Town of Lee, an official Town of Lee Facebook page. So, I've been working on it with the help of Karen Rossi, who is more Facebook savvy, and the Fire Chief Scott Nemitz, both of whom are more Facebook savvy than I am. It's probably an age and generational thing.
It's just because Facebook people are awesome.
Well, okay, that might be true of Scott Nemitz.
None of them, not me.
Not Karen. So, we have, we have a page, and the page was public briefly. We went through some issues trying to figure out why no one could see it, but it now appeared to be visible. It's now unpublished until we talk about this policy guidelines and if the board adopts it. Because the biggest concern, biggest concern is people will comment on it, and then employees will feel like they got to jump on there and comment back, or some member of the public will comment something that is unsavory or unpleasant or, or just plain out factually inaccurate. But because we are a government, we can't just take posts down willy-nilly.
Right.
So, the guidelines really just essentially spell out how we take posts down and what we have to do. We have to keep track of them and so on and so forth. Because we don't want any First Amendment issues to arise out of the towns' use of Facebook.
Right.
It also appears that we can't, we can't set up a page and make it not possible... I think I'm going to really do a couple of negatives here. Make it, make it not possible for people to comment. Facebook took that away. You can't set a page up and turn the comments off.
Can you turn a comment off of a post?
I would turn to my Facebook consultant because...
I know when, I've posted things in the past when I've reached out to Laura Thompson on the Neighborhood page and asked her to turn off comments. But that's a different page than our page. Our page is a governmental business page.
So, we don't know?
So, we don't know.
Okay.
So, that's just a concern.
Okay.
And it's a big, it's a...
It's a genuine concern based on what we see on Neighborhood.
Right, we had an issue last week where somebody was absolutely positively wrong in what they posted. But you can't, that was on the Neighborhood page, and they took it down thankfully.
Right. Well, not the second time.
Not the second time, the first time they took it down.
Yes, different people.
Yeah.
Slightly different issues.
I've been all up and down that with Neighborhood, and it is going to be interesting. On the other hand, there is, you know, we are a government organization, and there are definite rules.
Right. So...
I think it's important we adopt a policy. I don't see anything in it that would concern me.
Who is the keeper of the page, administering the policy?
Right now, it's me. I, I still, I keep saying it over and over like a broken record. I remain concerned that non-exempt employees will be working on Facebook on their off-hours, and that is not right.
I get Facebook messages 34/5 a week with questions about town stuff. Even if I put in my post, please contact me, email, not Messenger, I still get them.
And is there a way that we can forward those to someone, to have someone handle that? Or what can we do to help support that, to stop that behavior?
Well, right now, on the town page...
Till Monday.
Right now, on the town page, the only person who can get in there is me.
Right. So, I think...
My fear is if I don't answer them, there's going to be a post about me. I sent her a message, and she didn't get back to me.
Yeah, we see that a lot.
We see that about everything.
I know. But I did notice that when Neighborhood, somebody started to say, please don't contact them during the town... Like, it started to change that, the way we...
I called her and asked her. Instead of tagging people, I asked her, because she would tag town employees. So, I called her, and I said, could you please not tag town employees to answer this question?
So, we're going to be dealing with that differently on our page. There'll be different ways to deal with it. I had some really interesting things I found on other people's pages recently that might help us too, to have like commonly asked questions.
Okay.
So, I think, I think that's important. But I think the key is going to be to make sure that town employees are not responding so they can understand that's my private Facebook page, it's not my work Facebook page, and that if you want to reach out, question, you know, that's the key, is not having your name...
I'm with 10 minutes.
You know, that way. So, how page that grew.
And that, one of the things that is in this, the guidelines and what other towns do is you drive people to the town website. You can find the answers to your questions on the town website.
Right. So, do we have any way that, I mean, we have, is there any way that if somebody sees something that is not okay, I don't want to contact you on off-hours to say, hey, there's a problem. Is there any way that we could have someone that is working in the evenings or something that they could just delete a post?
No, I mean, unless there's, I mean, and first of all, if someone's putting something on Facebook and it's a genuine emergency, call, call 911.
Right.
So...
If they're commenting negatively and we need to...
You know what? Nobody wants to, well, nobody wants to see that when they're sitting at home trying to enjoy their private, quiet time. So, I, I personally would just as soon know about it the next workday.
That's what I'm saying. I don't want you to be contacted. So, what if somebody says something that is dangerous or not?
Well, the problem is, is we have to be careful too, what we remove.
Right.
Right.
That's the problem. You can't just remove a potion like...
Right. So, I'm thinking about...
It's really subjective too. There really should be only one person or...
I know, but I don't want to be working at things. I'm trying to figure how do we make sure...
Oh, I won't be looking at it at night.
Right.
I don't think anyone should.
Right.
As a, as a person who is aware of some of the stuff going on, let's say, day X or something like that, and conversations start happening that are dangerous, and I see that. Do, can I tell the police chief? Can he have some ability in a dangerous situation to remove something?
I guess I'm, I'm struggling to understand what would be dangerous on a Facebook post.
Right, and if it was something dangerous, I, if it's important, I wouldn't, and if it's something serious, I wouldn't mind being called, and I'm sure she wouldn't mind being called.
In that case, you, you sure?
I'm, I'm just not...
If it was inciting?
Thank you.
Right. But if it was...
Oh, like I'm going to come to Town Hall tomorrow?
Let's say I'm adopted, right, or something. Somebody's saying, call her, she's a whatever.
Right.
Now, everyone's calling.
Right. But if it's, I went to the town clerk office today, nobody came to the window.
Fine.
Right. I mean, do we like seeing those things?
No.
Because they're not accurate, but...
Right.
Can, can you step back just a minute? What are we trying to achieve with this? Interaction with the citizenry, what are we trying to achieve?
The goal is so that when people who are part of our town, which is literally all of us represent, have questions or want to know things or want to be part of the town, we don't have the same ability to communicate with people. So, one of the biggest problems we have is that we're, we're not communicating with each other very well, and that's caused a lot of problems. Neighborhood has filled in that void, but in a very different way. However, people need to know, hey, I don't know what to do, you know, that kind of thing. The hope is that we are posting things on our page that answer questions. So, you don't have a lot of people out there asking questions. And when we have important things that need to be communicated publicly, like, hey, it's voting day, please don't throw your trash, we can be in control of that message, make sure it's out there clearly. It's, let's say we had to shorten the days, hours, the transportation, that would be a nightmare. But if people who go there explore their information, then that helps and helps to bring everyone together. So, the positive is incredibly huge. There are risks with that communication. I don't have another way that I know that we can communicate with people easily. We have a paid, a webpage, but it's, you know, there's so many answers there. And a lot of people have been referring to the goal of check out the, you know, the town webpage. But if there's an actual page and they can look at it, I think that's important. And I think you have weekly updates from different departments and committees, and people just got to get used to seeing things there. I know for me that until I got really involved with what was going on, I saw the eCryer. Oh, I should really click on that, but I'll do that later because I have to click the link.
All right. We need to move on to here.
So, excuse me. So, your hope is that committees and commissions will provide input on the Facebook page as well?
Well, to have not, to have just like random input, but to be able to have a space where they can share, or we could say there's a place, here's the, check with the, whatever, check with the committee they have posting or to link. It depends on how we want to go forward with that. But we have to have some way that we can share, this is where this information is. So, similar to the eCryer, even if we just post the eCryer and has that in there, people will see it as opposed to not checking their email. That's my hope.[1768.94]
Because the police department has a Facebook page, the fire department has a Facebook page.
The highway department has a Facebook page, the conservation commission, the rec commission.
But the Neighborhood has become the town Facebook page, and it's managed by an individual resident, and I don't think that's acceptable.
I understand that, but we already have Facebook pages, so we've had Facebook pages for a while without a policy, so how are they dealing with these particular things that we're talking about here?
I don't know. I'm just telling you that any, any advice I've ever...
If anyone has a hot topic.
I've ever read or ever heard that if a government is gonna have a Facebook page, you need to have written guidelines that, that talk about the First Amendment issues and what you're gonna do about comments that are inappropriate.
Right, and you have to remember too, when he posts something on Facebook, people are very careful, for the majority, how they respond. Because that's the police department, the fire department, they don't care about Town Hall.
That's exactly...
That's the big difference between, now I have seen some...
I've seen some pretty interesting posts on there.
Right, but majority is great job, not blah, blah, you know, negative.
What I've found is if the post isn't graphic in nature, it's directed towards us, I leave it.
Right.
No response is better than a response.
Great.
And it goes away quickly.
Yep.
What tends to happen is residents come to our defense.
Correct.
And next thing you know, the writer takes the post down themselves. It's been managing itself.
Yeah, it isn't happening with us.
Right, and that isn't gonna happen with us.
So, I mean, we have a Facebook, we have a policy on, on our officers. What they will post, what they can post, what they post on their own social media. But, yeah, it's, it, and for us, it was, it was, it was tough. You saw some posts you really wanted to respond to, but...
Oh, yeah.
We, we let it go, and it's, now it's, you know, I, you know, I put posts, "Hey, this page is for us to get information out to you." You know, if, if it gets too bad and the language gets too bad, we'll take the page down. And it seemed to just smooth itself out, and now it is what it is. It's for information and people to post stuff on. It's been working okay.
And I think that those things, like the police has a certain following, certain people check that page, and then the algorithm allows for them to see it, and then there's different pages people see. And I think my hope is that with the town, where you can have that coming together, you increase the algorithms for all the different groups getting more traction.
Thank you. So if the board approves the policy, the guidelines as is?
I think it's fine. I think at some point, we need to revisit it and see how it's working.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah.
There's problems that's different.
Yeah, so I, I would be, be able to approve it as it's written, but then we check back in, you know, a couple of months, a month, see how it's working and see if we need to...
And if people wanna have a weekly, something on the Town Hall, who is, if that decides what we can do, that, let's say, conservation wants to share their newsletter, who is in charge of, if we post that on the town page?
Again, right now, that's me.
Okay, great.
Because I love Facebook so much.
Is the laser dirt...
Will you see me on TikTok next?
Oh, great, please can help you with that.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion?
It's all right, that's better.
Yeah, it's actually, if you could just approve the Facebook guidelines as presented, that would be pretty, make sure that's...
So, motion of that?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the Facebook guidelines as presented. Can I get a second?
I'll second that. It's my fault.
Roll call, Bud, selectman Budby?
Yes.
Select person, Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Cell phone policy, or device policy. So upon advice of council, the policy has been reworked such that any employee who requires a cellphone in order to do their job, is the short way of saying it, the town should provide the cellphone. That the town should not provide stipends to employees for the use of their own personal phones for reasons that you're familiar with at this point, because of 911 issues. So right now, there are 10 employees that receive a stipend. I believe the police department wants to add maybe two or three phones to that to rotate among the officers.
Yes.
That's a great idea.
I don't, the fire department might, might wanna need to add some as well, so, you know, you're looking probably at a minimum of 15 phones on...
Each person has their own phone, but they're not supposed to be used personally?
No, each, the town buy, the town would buy...
Right, that we give them.
15 phones that are then given to the employees.
And they're supposed to be using them when they're not working?
No, I mean, no.
So couldn't the police department have...
Well, if they're working, well, it's not...
Certain number of phones that they assign to the person? Like you have five phones, is that why anyone working has one of those phones?
Yeah, that's the plan for the police department.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they don't wanna take them home.
Right, exactly, right.
They don't wanna carry two phones.
And can we do that with fires as well, or no, because they're on call, is that the reason?
I don't think that the fire chief planned on giving to anybody cellphones, or too many people's cellphones.
Great, so decrease the number of people that are getting a stipend and just...
Well, they're not getting stipends now.
Oh, okay.
They're not on the list of 10. Unless the board wants to change the current list of 10 people, because this policy, as you may have noticed, calls for the board to make the decision as to who fits the definition of someone who should be getting a town-owned cellphone.
I didn't see anyone that stood out to me.
I don't remember, can, who's on the list?
Planning and zoning administrator, the building inspector, the building maintenance supervisor, building maintenance assistant, the police chief, the police lieutenant, the public works director, highway department assistant, highway department mechanic, and the welfare director. Although the welfare director, the police chief, and the police lieutenant, right now, the town is already paying the full cost for a cellphone.
Did I miss the town administrator?
I do not, I do not get a stipend.
Because she's always buying the phone?
Well, no, the, some previous board, back when I was higher, just didn't wanna give me a stipend.
Oh, do you need a phone when you're not at work?
Again, I, I think I'm willing to take the risk of using my personal phone against advice of council. It, I mean, quite frankly, it's rare...
Right.
That I'm contacted after hours, and it would be no different than if I had a landline.
Right.
You'd call me at home.
Right, I don't think I know anything other than the Town Hall number, so, you know.
Okay, much better.
So if the board approves with this policy, my next step would be to contact Verizon, the government person, and find out what this would cost.
Are these flip phones?
It might be. I, I love my flip phone.
Me too.
I had a little red flip phone, it was about this big.
Okay, anyway.
Great.
All right, so the board wants me to proceed, is really what I was looking for this evening?
I, I feel, yeah?
Proceed.
All right. Lead paint on town buildings.
Great.
No, that's not good.
Back in August of 2017, the board asked me to get quotes to have the buildings painted, town buildings painted, the Hobo Shed, Town Hall, the historical building, the library, and the police, police building, public safety complex.
And oddly enough, they haven't gotten better?
They haven't gotten painted. In prices that ranged from $21,000 to $45,000, again, that was in 2017.
For all the buildings?
Uh huh.
Wow.
The board at the time, the board wanted to wait for the facilities committee results.
Still waiting.
And...
You've got, you've got, you've got what you've asked of them, yes.
You do know how much more it's gonna cost to paint now?
And this is just, the board asked me, if we were talking about this in previous meetings or something.
The lead paint is the...
They haven't been painted since 2009.
Yeah, and it, to one building is 10, 15,000 dollars. Not, I mean, depends on the size, but, wow, okay.
2009, 2017.
We should have...
So does that include the lead paint mitigation?
Yes.
Yes, that would include it, but, yeah.
Because officially, what is it? The tool shed, the Historical Society Building, and the eight-town annex, building of three?
I don't know that the annex has lead paint.
I wonder if...
I don't think, I don't think it's...
It's since the Kennedy, right, the Kennedy era, so that could be the...
They should've removed a lot of the lead paint, 2009, when they painted the buildings.
So we're gonna get them tested first before we pay for it, in case you don't need...
Well, we can do, we, we can do that.
Yeah, do that.
So what does the board, what do you, do you want to do anything? Do you want to do nothing? What do you want to do?
Well, that's part of the thing, if we're gonna take a building...
That's part of the thing.
Well, if we're gonna take a building down, painting, it's not a great idea. On the other hand, if we're gonna not take a building down, we should get it done.
Well, I think we should ascertain which buildings have the lead paint.
Yes, that's the first one.
And which ones don't, so I think we can move forward with that.
Because that will affect the, any quote you get from anywhere. You can't move forward without that.
Yes, yes.
Nice to hear that.
So, so we're talking about them, not scraping, scraping the paint off, et cetera, et cetera?
Yeah, they have to tent it around the wood, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Exterior, not interior.
Yes, yeah.
All right, we will, we will look into that further. And that's all I have.
Well, there you go. What a fun thing we're having.
Well, miscellaneous, you know, our...
We need to do the consent agenda.
Huh?
We need to do the consent agenda.
Number nine?
Yep.
Motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Vote?
I'm outta here.
You had a second?
I did.
She did, you did a second?
Yeah, she did. She was the designated second.
Roll call, Bud.
Yes.
Select person, Casper?
Yes.
Selectman Brown, yes. Miscellaneous unfinished business?
Talk about that while you sign, I can, Aaron, have fun. See you on Friday.
Good, Aaron.
Bye.
Any miscellaneous unfinished business?
I'm just gonna watch, because you're a good insider.
You don't know how to expose it or anything?
Sure.
It's not good.
I, I just have a new bag for my birthday, so I don't have all the supplies anymore.
Don't you use a bag?
Some of them.
We start from both that.
Oh, I love it.
Didn't you learn that before?
Well, you know, we haven't done this in a while.
Yeah, over a year.
Got it. You guys just keep me thinking of working.
I think I can see. Not if it approved it.
Spoke it up there, Casper.
But we're not assessing officials.
Yes, we are. So three of us are...
All right, so do I have to like pick a line? I can be the middle one?
No, I'm the one, you're in the last.
Because I'm the youngest.
Yes, no, you're the newest.
Suppressive, the most obnoxious, the least well-behaved. What are we, how about the best for last?
Uh, sure, let's go with that.
I love that.
Until I'm last, and then, when I'm not...
Oh, you could be the best for last on those days.
Oh, yeah, I miss doing this.
I don't know how you can read any of our signatures, whoever, Mr. Brown, you can read his.
Well, on some of the ones that we did through Adobe, Denise had to have them, what is it?
I know, I had to fix it.
When it went to the registry.
Yeah.
So then I gave up on my signature, I just did the...
All right. Should put the back end so I don't confuse Mr. Brown.
Oh, okay.
I'll be official, that's cool. Just two on this one, right?
Yeah.
Is this like watching a movie, driving?
Just about.
We'll have to be there at 6:00.
And we're not doing the reimbursement request for being illegal for James Bond, right? Or are we?
Say that again?
Yeah.
No, it's in the list.
But you pretty sure that you're not going to...
That was unofficial, but...
Okay. Did you meet...
18:15.
Oh, sorry, can't make a thing. Sorry, can't make a thing.
All right, I understand.
Do we still need to sign a paper?
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, is it the Town Hall? Or, yeah?
I'll be there on Friday.
Okay.
I don't know about the two of us, maybe.
I'm going to be there.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Brown, I think I'm gonna be there.
I am.
We don't need the definition. If it was, Barrington does alternate days, that alternates the electorations. First of all, go to a variation.
No.
Different quarters doesn't need the definition. I mean, I was learning that.
Can you, on condition, talk about removing the...
Oh, sure. We can do that now while we're signing?
I don't know.
Mr. Brown, can we talk about our Mabry meeting while we're having...
Our what?
Our Mabry meeting?
Sure, go ahead.
All right. We met with Mabry, Town Hall, the select board, and we're able to just kind of open up the conversation about the potential of working together on different projects. We shared a lot of the different things we were struggling with, which were, of course, really similar. Mabry was excited to talk to us because we're a little closer in size to them. Although they did speak longingly about many of the things that we could do that they can't do, so that was nice to be reminded of the things that go well here. And they, what else? They wanted to reach out to us about some specific topics, but I haven't heard any of them.
No, I think, and they, we also discussed, yeah, maybe they would want to come over and look at the transfer station for a tour of the transfer...
Everybody loves the tour station.
Yeah, that's... Um, they're very, they're very interested in that, whether that means they're gonna improve or build the one they have, or talk to them about, uh, picking up some of their, picking up some of their, have them use the transfer station to, to, to other public ways.
Oh, I don't think they mentioned that. Do you think that they were thinking about using our transportation? Oh, okay. I, I didn't get that from the same thing. But I do know that they wanted to learn about how we did it, what we needed, and we talked a little bit about if there were things we could share, so we weren't investing in items that we use once a week or whatever that are, you know, that maybe we could use for sharing. We also talked about how hard it is having small towns for our police and fire, and how really you just, it's very hard because there's no real...
They definitely have the same issues we do relative to hiring, hiring and terminating, and whatever, getting enough people, getting enough the right people.
Their biggest issue is they're completely part-time, police department.
Right.
So full-time departments will...
Yeah, they've called themselves a training ground, because they just, they pay. So we talked about what if there was a way to do something with other small towns where people had promotionability, so you could have, you know, everyone has their police department, but you have some, um, upper levels that you can build together in a, in a different way. So just opening up the topic, the conversation, thinking about, we're all facing the same thing, how do we handle that? How do we do some cost sharing? How do we make sure that the people that work for us wanna keep working?